We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start by the flag of the region.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you can take your roll call, please.
Commissioner Headwater.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioners Zanstrad.
Here.
Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
Commissioner Salzweedl.
Here.
And Commissioner Teelander.
Here.
And Chair Hanley.
Here. Okay, looking at the agenda to get approval for that.
I'll make approval to accept the agenda.
A little second, thank you. All those for yes?
Yes.
All those for no? Any stands? Okay, the agenda's approved. And then looking at the minutes from our last regular meeting on November 9. Any corrections, changes?
Motion approved.
Thank you. All those for yes?
Yes.
Any no's? And that's approved. And then at this time, we'd like to open the meeting to any public comments or communications concerning items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on. Appears there's no old business, so moving straight to new business. We have the meeting dates for 2016.
I'll make a motion to accept those dates for 2016.
All those for yes?
Yes.
Any no's? No stands? And then we have our schedule. And then moving on to 6B zoning ordinance for breweries. Did you have that work?
It's the Andy Show.
Andy.
So one of the items that I sent you is a, there's a brief cover memo that I wrote and a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance to include breweries, or I call it brewery slash winery. And so what, a little bit of background reason why we're doing this is because there's an interested party who is considering opening a brewery in the city. And it wouldn't be something that would be associated with a restaurant in this case, so there's not really anything in zoning that would address this sufficiently, in my opinion. And since the zoning enabling act says that we need to provide for every lawful use of land if there's a demonstrated need for it, then the next step would be to amend the ordinance to include it and then regulate it somehow. And so I think we talked about this a little bit last month. And you guys all sort of agree that this would be best dealt with as a special land use, so that's what I wrote. And so I suggested that this be permitted in both C3 and industrial. And so if we look at the zoning amendment, you'll see that in section 1, I just wrote a simple definition for what a brewery slash winery would be. And then in section 2, I amended, actually, I realized in writing this that there's no dead, simple definition for what a restaurant is in zoning ordinance either. So I figured, well, I would be, while we're doing this, and since often brew pubs have a brewery associated with that particular restaurant, it would make sense to define that as well. And then I also included there that a restaurant may also include a winery slash brewery as an accessory use. And so again, definitions are simply stating what the thing is that we're going to regulate, so that when we refer to it later in the ordinance, everyone's clear as to what we're talking about and what it is and what it isn't. And then you'll see that in the next couple of sections, we have basically, where I just wrote, where it says Q and there's the N that says brewery slash winery, that's just amending the text of the ordinance in the C3 and the industrial district to include a brewery slash winery as a special land use. And then the real sort of meat of the thing, as far as regulation is concerned, is in this section 5 here, which amends a chapter of the zoning ordinance that pertains to special land uses. And so if you guys are familiar with the ordinance, obviously, it'll, what you've seen in chapter 17, I think it is, in the ordinance, there's a whole list of subsections, A through what would now be D, D's, so there's 29 or so subsections that contain specific standards for specific uses of land. And so this would add a brand-new section to the end of that chapter. And so now that we have a new land use defined called brewery slash winery, we would regulate it. And so these six provisions here are the provisions that would apply to that along with anything else in zoning. But these would all apply specifically to a brewery slash winery, and that's why they're written in this particular manner. So I'll just review those standards with you guys and for the benefit of the public here. So we're all just sort of on the same page. The first one is that a brewery or winery shall be located on a parcel at least 200 feet away from any residentially zoned property. That's primarily, in my view, related to things like noise, smells, delivery trucks, stuff like that. And it's just something so, to keep sort of the residential character and protect the residential uses a little bit. And number 2 sort of is along that same theme. It says sites shall be designed and operated to minimize potential negative impacts on adjacent properties. One thing that I've learned about brewing, both, you know, when I was a kid, my dad did a lot of home brewing, and, you know, 12-year-old me didn't like the way it smelled very much. And I kind of like it now, but it took a long time to sort of get to that point.
13.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, but it's, you know, understanding that there is ventilation that occurs with brewing, there's, you know, the, just the smells of the process venting out into the street, into the open air, if that's right next door to somebody's house, they might not like that very much. So again, this is just looking at, sort of, it, just designing the site so that those sorts of things are going to be minimized and are going to be taken care of. And number 3 says the applicant shall demonstrate that all trucks and delivery vehicles be provided with adequate maneuvering areas on the lot. Maneuvering shall not be permitted on adjacent property or in a right-of-way. So again, if there's a delivery truck, someone's pulling in, backing out, something like that, all of the area for the turning, the maneuvering, and all of that has to be on the property. They can't, you know, pull out in the mainstream and back in, block traffic, and all that sort of thing. That's what that's getting at, and that is something that does come up every once in a while, especially on very small lots, very tight sites where there's not a lot of room for that sort of thing.
Is that, can I interrupt? Is that the same for other businesses in this downtown area?
Um...
Like for restaurants and that?
No, I don't know for sure, not. Sometimes there's a general standard in the ordinance that says that, but I don't know that it specifically applies everywhere. You know, for example, especially in a more traditional Main Street sort of environment, a lot of those deliveries just happen in a alley in the back often, which is a public right-of-way of some sort. So if there was something that was specific to just a, you know, something like that, I could see where they might need to use it. But generally speaking, I'm thinking this is being a more production-oriented, almost industrial kind of activity versus like a restaurant.
Okay.
So that's why I put that in there. Number 4 simply enables the planning commission to establish hours of operation, although you don't have to if you don't want to.
Is that something that's normal for any other restaurant?
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, it just was strange that, you know, why would we reserve that power?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that the special land use process in general, I think, grants you the ability to set hours of operation for almost anything you want, within reason, as long as a reasonable hours of operation. I think that's a reasonable condition that you could place on almost any sort of special land use approval. But I mean, since, I feel like sometimes when we have these things where alcohol may be being served, dates and times can run late, I mean, 2:00 in the morning or whatever it is for, this is a lot. I'm not saying that this particular operation would be open until 2:00 AM, but it's possible. And so I think that in the interest of sort of, again, protecting neighborhoods that are nearby, residential uses that are nearby, other things like that that might be sensitive to that sort of activity, it might make sense to live an hours of operation. And this all depends on sort of where it is. You don't have to set that as a condition if you don't want to. If there's nothing around it and it doesn't make any difference, okay, fine, let it go until whatever time you want. But if it happens to be next door to, you know, an apartment complex, then that might be a very different situation as far as you're concerned. Number 5 is sort of a general standard that we have a lot that just says that the operator shall maintain all applicable federal, state, county, and local permits, furnish copies of those permits to the city. So obviously with a brewery slash winery, there's, you know, alcohol-related liquor control type licenses that they would have to get. Things like that would have to be submitted to the city, and obviously keeping up on them would be important. And then the last one, again, I wrote here that the applicant shall demonstrate that adequate parking and loading area are provided on the site, and the planning can, and the planning commission may require additional parking if the quantity proposed is deemed inadequate. And again, I wrote that in here because I didn't add a specific minimum parking standard. A lot of times in zoning, you'll see that there's a whole list of land uses that say, well, this use is, you know, minimum of two spaces per, you know, 500 square feet, or whatever it is. In this case, because there, I mean, this can be a very wide-ranging intensity of use, right? I mean, it could be a very small operation, or it could potentially be a very large operation. So what they need, I don't really know that it makes sense to require a specific number of spaces, especially because some of the accessory things that sort of go along with that also can be all over the map. If they're just doing production, then you don't need a whole lot of public parking necessarily because there's not really many public going there outside of employees. But something like this could, for example, include a tasting room, in which case you might attract general, you know, members of the public. So for that reason, I think that as long as the applicant demonstrates that there's adequate parking, I think that's fine. The planning commission can choose to accept that proposal from the applicant if her zone climbs. If the planning commission feels like more parking would be needed, you could require that as well, and the applicant figure out a way to make it happen. So that's kind of it as far as the regulations are concerned. I don't know if you guys have any further questions or comments or concerns.
I did have a question, just, I wanted to say, what about distilleries? I mean, that's very popular today with wine tastings and beer tastings. I mean, it seems that businesses are going in that direction as well. Is that more complicated, or should it be included? So we're not going down this road in two years?
Um, I don't know. I agree that it's something that's getting a lot of attention. I don't know the distilling process very well. I don't know if this could be a fairly simple thing to just, let's just lump in distilleries with these other things and all regulate it the same? Or if it would make sense to sort of expand this a little bit and maybe, you know, have a separate category, I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not opposed to a road trip over in Hollander's, a couple breweries. So if you want to see how the operation is, I think, you know, to be honest with you. It's a little bit different, it's more volatile as far as...
Yeah, I mean, the only distillery I've been to is pretty big. A few weeks ago was in Buffalo Crayson, Kentucky, which is gigantic. And they have, you know, huge warehouses and, you know, acres and acres and acres of stores and everything else. But depending on what they're distilling, all of that isn't necessarily needed. I mean, you don't need to age, you know, a lot of mutual spirits and things like that. So I don't, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I can do some checking.
It just seems like, I mean, it's just getting more and more popular.
Yeah.
And I know places that do it all now.
They could be doing this in another year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
So, it's just my thought. Other questions, Todd?
On the parking, we have, we have stuff in ordinances today that in a commercial application, that there's X number of parking spots per employee. Is it a one-to-one ratio?
It depends on the use. Some of them are, it's one space per X number of square feet of building.
Of the order, not necessarily per.
Some of them are per employee. Some of them are a combination of square footage and per employee. Some of them are, you know, if it's a hospital, a lot of times it's per bed. It's like Gulf Coast, it's three spaces per horn. It's all over the place as far as what the base, sort of the baseline is.
Actuancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Because to me, it seems like where this particular one, there seems to be probably a lot of parking, but if somebody was to, they consider one down further, it's parking's already tough, and then all of a sudden during the day, 15, 20 places are taken up because of employee resources.
Yeah, and it's really, that's why I sort of left it open because where I'm sort of moving philosophically with parking is that, one, I don't want a minimum parking standard to hold up a good project. And then, two, I, a lot of times I think that the applicant is, you know, might have a better grasp of how much parking they need, more so than my sort of arbitrarily-defined standard that makes sense to me and is sort of the norm for that use. We can certainly look at the parking generation books that the IT puts out, and we have one in the office and I use it all the time. But especially with something like this, because it is a, like I said, there's a wide range of how intense something like this could be. It could be very small, very small building, you know, one employee or two employees, very minimal public, you know, sort of thing. Or it could turn into, or it could turn into, or someone, you know, larger operation could just decide they want to open one and have it be way bigger, have a, you know, much larger bar and tasting room. It could evolve into, you know, much more intensely induced with a lot more public. And so I don't want to let someone put in too little, but I also don't want to require way more than we need to. So I guess in this sense, that's why I left it pretty open.
Yeah, I would love to see it grow into a Founders type, and it's just continued. But again, if you haven't been down to Founders, parking is extremely difficult to find a spot.
Right, I mean, the city does have provision now. If it was in like C2 or mixed use, there's a provision in the ordinance that allows for, I think, you could be up to, you can count anything within 400 feet as part of your required minimum parking. So that is we're not, you know, taking good usable pieces of land and just paving over and using them for parking.
And this lot isn't mixed use, right?
This, the one that we're talking about here is actually C3. It's C3. Yeah, it's right at the light.
Okay.
Main Street.
How's this looking?
Yeah.
I have a question. Does it make any sense to scale it based on volume? Because there's things like microbreweries, nanobreweries versus just regular breweries.
Yeah, we could do that. You know, I don't know how many, you know, how many gallons or cakes or barrels one person could conceivably do by themselves before they need an employee, or two, or three, or 12. I have no idea. But yeah, potentially. We, I mean, this, this could get a lot more detailed if we wanted to. I'm trying to keep it sort of general. But yeah, there's certainly, because this is such a sort of wide-ranging operation and from the, from the huge operations like, like Bells or Founders to, you know, a small craft brewery, or in this place, contract brewery is what's proposed. There's a pretty wide range in how intense a land use you could end up with, depending on what's proposed.
Okay, well, the reason I bring that up is because that'll dictate how much traffic is going in and out from supply and sales.
Yeah, we could certainly take, take a look at, and I, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but we can find out, you know, at least get a sort of estimate from, from some folks as to how much one person can reasonably do anyways, and then go from there if you're more comfortable with having a minimum standard of some sort instead of...
The way that it's worded now would be, we would review each project and determine the parking at that point.
Yeah, I mean, basically what I've suggested here is that when somebody comes in for a site plan review to have this done, they would say, and this is what I'm proposing for parking. I'm going to have three employees and whatever, and so this is what I expect. And the planning commission can say, okay. Or they can say, no, because you haven't, in our opinion, and based on our experiences, you haven't provided enough for X, Y, and Z. It gives you the ability to accept what they have proposed or require more in your judgment that would be a better idea.
And then our job tonight is to give the general okay for this and then set a public hearing, is that correct? Or do we approve this?
This would be a, yeah, this is a zoning amendment, so the planning commission would still need to hold a public hearing on it and then make a recommendation to council. So if you were, if you want to schedule a public hearing for January, you can. If you want to, you know, if you want me to make some edits and bring it back, that's fine too, it's kind of up to you.
What do you think? Looks good so far?
It's okay.
Yeah, I think we can set the public hearing. Do we have to move for that?
You technically don't have to.
I just have the power?
Yeah. You can though. You can tell me that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it's clear to you that technically you don't have to. I think we can arbitrarily set a public hearing. You just have to hold the public hearing.
Yes. How big compared to the, or whoever?
Yeah. If I may, there's just one thing I wanted to throw out, two, if I could. The way you set the definition for a restaurant that could include a brewery slash winery, does that open it up for a possibility of a brewery slash winery connected to a restaurant that would be in the C2 and mixed-use districts?
Yes.
For restaurants?
Right. Yeah, I mean, what this does now, so...
It would be accessory to the actual restaurant.
Exactly, and I wrote it that way very intentionally. So as an accessory use, a restaurant, that would be in any district where a restaurant is permitted, could also include this as a sort of something of accessory to the restaurant.
I just want to make sure that it was clear to everybody.
Yeah, so any, any district where a restaurant is allowed, which right now is C1, 2, 3, mixed use, I think it's a, so, any place where a restaurant is permitted, a brewery would be allowed as an accessory. So basically, any, any commercial area of the city, a microbrewery type thing would be permitted.
So could an existing restaurant then?
Or brew pub.
Then get a brewery? That's your...
It'd still be an accessory use and still would require site plan approval?
Good. We have a public hearing then in January to discuss changes? And then moving on to zoning changes for Grand Rapids gravel. And that's, seems more than specific to Grand Rapids gravel. We're talking about bigger changes of it.
Yeah, this one's a little more complicated. This is something that I noticed a long time ago, and this is a great reason for us to get this part of the ordinance sort of fixed because it's been bothering me for a long time. So included in your packets was a memo that I wrote to Mark, and I think we also reviewed this in November as well, as sort of a background information for you guys that just sort of summarized some of the complications that are involved with that property and then wanting to do mining and how the zoning works at this particular time. So just as a sort of quick recap, right now, the property that they're looking at is at 2104 Bowes, which is in the southwest part of the city, south side of Bowes Road. They've, Grand Rapids Gravel has expressed an interest in mining that. And so if we take a look at the zoning map, it's pretty clear that there's a, that there's two zoning districts involved there. One is the industrial district, and one is the floodplain district. And the property is basically split right down the middle as to which is in which district. The issue with that is that the text of the ordinance that pertains to the floodplain district very clearly says that it's an overlay. And an overlay is something that, as I've shown on the map that came with your packets, it's sort of, it overlays on top of the existing zoning because it'll see through it. So it's an additional layer of zoning regulation, basically, that is enacted there because there's some specific thing going on, or there's some specific characteristics in those areas. In this case, they're areas that are all in the floodplain. So because we have this, this conflict between what's on the map, which is there is no overlay, and what the text says, which is there is an overlay, we need to rectify that and make it so they agree with one another. The other issue here is that the overlay, again, this is in the zoning ordinance, the overlay permits something that's prohibited in the underlying zoning, which again is usually backwards from the way that it usually is. Usually you have your restrictions or your regulations that are in zoning, and overlay is an additional layer of regulation on top of that. So usually the overlay is then more restrictive than the underlying zoning. In this case, the, specifically with regard to mining, the overlay is actually less restrictive. So that's another conflict that we need to get figured out. And then the last thing that I don't like about the floodplain is it basically says that anything in the floodplain, any permitted use, has to be treated as a special land use. So anything downtown, for example, including where we sit right now and across the street and everywhere else that's within the floodplain, any, any sort of development activity that would require a site plan review would have to also go through that special land use process, which to me doesn't really make a lot of sense because there's nothing inherently interesting about the land use itself necessarily that would require that extra regulation. But having some additional flood protections does make sense. So with all that in mind, in the October 20 memo to Mark, I just laid out some steps that need to be fixed before Grand Rapids gravel can really even come in and apply. And so knowing that they're looking at the spring as far as when they would come in and apply to start mining that, that property, I laid out the three items under number one, which is to amend the map. The first one is to illustrate the 100-year floodplain as an overlay district, as it should be in the ordinance. Then we'd have to rezone the property that's currently zoned floodplain to something else. We can, so we actually have an underlying district that we can look at because right now there is no underlying district. And then at the city's option, we could further edit the map to, you know, refine it, illustrate all of the rezonings that have occurred over the years. And I suppose they're all incorporated into that map that you have in front of you. So, you know, starting a couple of years ago, Betty Morlock and I worked on, you know, she went back through minutes and records and found all the applications, and she and I went through and made a whole bunch of changes to the map to make sure that every parcel that was rezoned is now zoned as in being in the proper zoning district on the map. So that was, basically step one is fix the map. Step two is fix the text. And so what you have in front of you here as far as the map and the amendment is my attempt to do all of that. So if you guys want to start with the map first, would that be, you know, if we're going in order here? I provided the map. It looks like this, it has the 100-year floodplain shown with the dots over it. I'm just going to focus on, on the areas that were zoned floodplain in the past, which is everything that's highlighted with that thick dark blue sort of line. So the Grand Rapids gravel property is the one that's over on Bowes Road, far southwest corner of the city. So what I did here is not real complicated. Where there was an area where the property was split zoned between some zoning district and floodplain, I just zoned the whole thing to whatever that zoning district is. So for example, the Grand Rapids gravel property, the northern half was industrial, the southern half was floodplain. I just made the whole thing industrial on this map. Similarly, if we move over to the parcel that's on the southern side of Bowes Road, just before it gets to, what is it, Hudson Street? Again, that's partially, it was partially R3, I believe, in floodplain. I just made the whole thing R3. And that theme pretty much carried through for every place else moving east. With the exception of the parcels that are proposed to be zoned as public facilities, those are parcels that according to the Kent County Assessor are owned by the cities, so I rezone them to public facilities. I'll let Mark weigh in as to whether or not that's an appropriate thing to do. And then on, on the south side of the river, there's a handful of parcels there that I think they're all pretty much by lands is what it looked like, or they didn't seem to be very usable, not all taken. I put all those in the suburban residential district, as with the larger parcel on the south side of the river, this way over on the east side of the city. Everything else, again, I just sort of attempted as best I could to just extend logically the zoning district to the south, or to extend whatever district was to the north, extend itself. So the areas that are zoned are 2, south of Main Street, where the word crow is on that map, those, that sort of dark yellow area, those were all sort of, I just thought it made sense to zone all that R2. The larger parcel I've zoned R3, the other ones that are owned by the city again are... The other ones that are owned by the city again are zoned public facilities. This is all proposed. Um, so if there's any mistakes, let me know. But again, I'm just kind of guessing here, so I'm hoping that, um, you guys can help me de, help me determine whether or not this is all, this is all appropriate. And then the zoning or the floodplain overlay is the, is the sort of turquoise colored dotted area. It looks a kind of messy now because of, there's sort of lines cutting through it. Um, and that design makes the difference between the floodway and the floodplain. And there is a difference. Um, but basically anything that has that sort of hatched line over it is, is within the 100 year floodplain. Um, and so as you can see, it's virtually all downtown. Um, you know, good part of the, of the, uh, of the city's downtown, also extending on to the west side of, of the river. Um, you know, goes north quite a ways. It's, I mean, it's, it's all over. It's, it's really extensive. And so, um, this, just the overall size of that floodplain is why I thought it was really important to make sure this is right. Because, uh, if we see development in the, in the mixed use district, for example, um, in parts of the C three or anywhere in the downtown, like right now, the ordinance would require a special land use process. And I don't think that makes a lot of sense in this case. So are there any questions on the map at this point or given on the text? Are there any changes? Like I said, I'm just kind of guessing based on sort of my knowledge of the area, but you guys obviously know the city way better than me, so.
If we make the map official, we were talking about the blues. Their colors were sort of difficult. I don't know if that's an option.
Oh yeah, I can change the colors any you want.
Because the F one floodplain and the public facilities were hard to differentiate. You're all together.
Oh, there, I think on the new map, there are no, there are no floodplains.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm.
The light blues in that here are the law. The, the very light blues are the floodway areas.
Yes, actually, I should have edited the legend here. So the F one floodplain district on the legend that's on the left hand side, that'll totally go away.
All right.
So there won't be any floodplain district anymore. There, there will just be the overlay, so.
There was a question I was going to ask. Are you proposing changes to that floodplain district with no, to the language with no parcels zoned or creating an overlay?
Right.
But then the second question is, is there any merit to even having an overlay?
Well, I think there is. I mean, being within the floodplain, there are certain, you know, steps that can and should be taken to sort of floodproof buildings. Um, and I think, um, we'll get into this a little bit. I, I edited the text a fair amount, but there is some language in there about, especially if it's a commercial or an industrial use, having it be watertight and having, uh, the, um, the lowest habitable floor of a building or business be a minimum one, one foot above the 100 year flood zone. So that if there is a 100 year flood, that it would be not, wouldn't actually go into the, the part of the building where people would be and things like that. So I think there is some merit to actually having, you know, overlay. A, a lot of communities do, but not all of them. Um, but we can get into sort of the, the pros and cons of this. But yeah, as, as a way of showing this on the map, there would be no more floodplain district in the sense that we have a, you know, R one, R two, R three district. It would only be an overlay and it wouldn't, and so there wouldn't be any specific parcel that would be zoned floodplain. So now we would have a bunch of parcels near, near the river, rivers that would have a conventional zoning district like, um, industrial, R two, mixed use, C two. And then they would also be subject to the additional regulations of the floodplain overlay. So that's sort of the, 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 the traditional sense of how an overlay works is that there's the base underlying standard you apply in zoning. And then because it's in a unique area, there's this additional regulation that, that applies on top of the, the normal standards.
If, if I may, I'm gonna, I'll just let you know that I'm gonna, I'm gonna push you to really think about what you want to do in a floodplain district. And the reason that I'm a little sensitive to it is because we, um, about four years ago, lost a manufacturing business, not because of our zoning ordinance, but, um, because of the, um, national requirements, um, related to building codes and those kinds of things. They were going to add to an existing building and, um, they were told that, uh, not only did they have to raise the floor of the, the addition, but they were going to have to raise the floor of the existing building by six inches in order to meet some national requirements. And we ended up losing that business because of that.
Yeah, I'm.
I, I don't know if we want to be careful about what we do in terms of local restrictions or not because so much of, especially so much of our commercial area isn't, isn't a floodplain. Um, so we should walk through it carefully, is that, that's honestly.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know a lot about the, about the commercial standards, but from, from a regulatory standpoint, there are a lot of regulations that come from, from the federal government and from FEMA about how all this stuff works. I mean, municipalities have to choose to participate in the national flood insurance program, for example. Um, and one of the things that I learned is that, um, and I witnessed a long time ago is that if you, if, if you buy a house, um, let's say you buy a house in one of these neighborhoods where, um, that's, that's within the 100 year floodplain. If you, if, if your house, if the lowest habitable floor of your house is not above that 100 year floodplain, if you don't have like an actual survey that says that, your, your flood insurance cost is going to be through the roof like five or $6,000 per year or something like that. Um, if you do meet that standard and if you're, and if the lowest floor of your house is six inches or a foot or whatever above the 100 year floodplain, then the cost is manageable. It's 450 bucks or something per year. And that's a rate that's set by the federal government. So your local insurance company can't do anything about it. They just pass the cost on to you, basically. Um, but yeah, there is, they're involved terribly and I don't, I don't know the, a lot of the specific whys and what the reason is, is for all of that. Um, but the insurance works differently. The insurance claim process works differently. The, their, their regulations, um, most likely supersede local regulations anyways as far as building codes and all that. And that's what it sounds like anyways. Um, so yeah, it's definitely kind of a unique circumstance. We'll have to be careful as to think about the impacts on all of this. Um, what I want this to do, at least for the city, since those higher standards are going to apply anyways, I don't want to put a lot of additional red tape regulation in front of somebody where they're going to have to face that anyways. Um, but as, as we move through this, I agree, we'd love to be careful and think about some of the ramifications. So I also included, uh, if you look back at the text now, um, I included a draft zoning amendment that would sort of fix this. Um, and there's a few things that I want you guys to be aware of and to sort of think about and hope that it makes sense to you. Um, so if you look at the, at everything that I wrote, the stuff that, that's highlighted would be brand new text. The stuff that's crossed out would be things that I would delete, obviously. So under section one of the draft ordinance, uh, this just simply permits mining as a special end use in the industrial district. Um, and that's now one thing that's going to be really important for you guys to know is that this allows mining in the, in the industrial district, anywhere in the city, not just on the Grand Rapids gravel property. Um, there aren't a lot of really big industrial properties in this city right now, so I don't know how feasible that would be in the first place to have a, you know, a mining operation of some sort. Uh, the Grand Rapids gravel property is, is the biggest one, I think, as far as terms of land area goes. Um, but there's a lot of other ways that we could, we could do it. I thought about having, uh, you know, minimum isolation radius from other properties or something like that. But, um, one, given how uniquely mining is, is regulated in the state, by the state, um, and, and how the law is written, I didn't, I wasn't really comfortable doing that. Uh, I mean, honestly, I'm not, I don't know that we could limit mining to any particular district, but, um, in this case, it works. And there's, like I said, there's not really any place else that can happen in the city, although it, right now it is permitted in the SR district as well. So like, any, any place looking at, at the map that would be zoned industrial or SR or sort of gray or the light yellow, some places where someone could conceivably, uh, begin some sort of mineral extraction operation. Um, so simply permitting mining in, uh, the industrial district is absolutely a huge step in the Grand Rapids gravel, you know, process. Right now, this is not allowed in, in the industrial district. So even if we were to approve the map as it was, they still wouldn't be allowed to actually have a mining operation there. And section two, um, this is kind of picky on my part, but I want, I, I wanted to include the word overlay in the actual title of the district just because it is. And so I don't want there to be confusion as to whether or not this is an overlay or if it's not, let's just, if it's an overlay, let's just call it an overlay. In section three, this is a pretty significant departure from what's currently in the, in the ordinance. So, um, what I've written in, in section three, um, particularly under, uh, uh, under subsection A is it says, "Any use permitted in the underlying dis-zoning district, whether by right or by special land use, shall be permitted within the floodplain overlay district in accordance with the standards and regulation of the underlying district." So in other words, before, there was a very small number of permitted uses in the floodplain district. Parks, very passive sorts of things. And everything, anything else would have been a special land use. What I'm suggesting here is that, um, we'll just look at what the underlying zoning is and that's what you can do. So anything that you could do in the industrial district, um, whether or not it's in the overlay, you can still do it, but there's still going to be these, these additional standards that would apply. Um, and then under item B, and this is just sort of a point of clarification where I, where I wrote that the standards of this chapter shall also apply to any proposed use in the floodplain overlay district where, where there is a conflict between the provisions of this chapter and the, any other applicable section of the ordinance, the more restrictive provisions shall control. Um, so then I, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but there might be something at some point where there's kind of a conflict between what's permitted and what's not permitted or, you know, what you can do or what a setback might be. And so what I'm seeing in this case is that you just pick whichever is, is the most restrictive provision and apply that one. But that's a pretty, uh, significant departure from the current policy. So I want to really emphasize and have you guys think about that. Um, and sort of compare it to what's in the ordinance now, just so you're comfortable with this moving forward. Um, the next section is section 14.04. Um, and again, there's, there's quite a few changes here. Some of them are, are, um, significant, some of them are not. Um, so instead of having this, this difference of having these uses are, are permitted and these uses are, are special uses, I'm just saying that, like I said, it's going to be permitted based on what's within the underlying district. And then section 14.04 is just additional standards. Um, so under item A, it says, "Development, including the introduction of structures and placement of manufactured homes within the floodplain overlay district shall not occur except in accordance with requirements of this ordinance and the following standards." Um, so again, before, um, there's some, there's a difference in language. You know, flood hazard area means something specific, uh, in the eyes of like the flood insurance program, for example. Um, except upon issuance of a zoning compliance permit is fine, but they're going to have to do that anyways. Um, so again, I think it's just sort of complicating matters and making it look like all you have to do is go in and get a zoning compliance permit, which that's not always going to be the case. Um, so then the standards here, one, two, three, four, uh, again, some of them are very, um, just minor things like changing the act from 245 to 451. Um, act 245 of 1929 was supposed to be peeled and replaced by act 451. So that's why I'm changing it. Um, under item four, I have no idea what this was trying to say before when I said the use pattern and the structure. I don't know what that means, so I just figured we'd say the proposed use and a brush structure shall be so designed as to not reduce water and pumping capacity of the floodplain or change volume or speed of the flow of water. That was, is something that would generally apply to something that is in the floodway. And the floodway is kind of where the moving water is during the flood and the floodplain is kind of the spillover. Um, every floodway would be within a floodplain, but not vice versa. Um, so again, that's, that's a fairly insignificant changes. Again, that's just sort of clarifying the, the language a little bit. Um, utilities, off-street parking, railroad structures and buildings for public or recreational uses. Um, again, I just wrote, "Shall be designed so as, so as not to increase the, increase the possibility of a flood." I did want to include maybe permit because again, I don't want to regulate what's going to be regulated by the underlying district. Um, so if it's permitted, then it shall be designed so as to not increase the possibility of a flood. Um, but then under item B, everything is the same except for number two. Uh, there's the Federal Insurance and Mitigation Administration, which is a different FEMA under the larger umbrella of other FEMA. Um, and again, that's just a sort of picky thing so that it's clear for everyone what the, uh, what the correct federal agency is, is making the rules. So again, under, under this, this proposed section, most of these changes are not all that significant except for the first one that I highlighted under, uh, section three of the amendment. That's, that's the most significant change and the one that I think requires the most thought and the most consideration by you guys. So, um, Chair Hamley, it's, uh, I'll turn it back over to you. If there are questions or concerns or comments or anything like that from the commission, let me know and I'll consider mine. This is kind of dry, but.
Chair, you don't have something?
Oh, me?
Yes.
Well, I, I, I don't have a whole lot on this. It is after the fact. It's, is I probably have more questions once we approve this. You know, what does that mean for, for roads? And, and, and I understand all that stuff is covered, but it's still stuff that I, I'm not aware of. So I really don't have a lot of questions on this per se.
I, I would just like to say that I, I hear what you're saying, Mark, about the, the restrictions in the floodplain, but I feel like those rules are there for a reason. I think I would like to keep the overlay and the extra requirements that that would, would have to come with it.
Yeah, and I think just to be clear, so what, what is being proposed is if you take the E one, for example, and one foot above 111. Cause I understand that you would be taking that standard, which exists now in the light blue sections on the map up there, but extending it to the entire 100 year floodplain that actually includes city hall and even some residential properties to the north.
Correct.
And that's really extending.
Yeah.
The boundary of.
Yeah, although I would argue that that boundary is already there. Um, if you look at the actual language in the ordinance right now, um, it says that the floodplain applies to, to anything that is within the 100 year floodplain. So if the city were challenged on it at this point, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you what, if the map would control or if the language would, would control. Um, but if we look in the ordinance now, I mean, it, it very clearly says in here already that the floodplain district is an overlay, that it applies to everything I'm looking for right now. Um, so everything that is within the 100 year floodplain is designated on map number such and such in year, you know, 1983 or whatever it is. Here we go. Um, yeah, it says, "The flood hazard area zone shall overlay existing zoning districts delineated on the official city of Bowes on the map. The boundaries of the flood area zone shall coincide with the boundaries of the areas as within the limits of the 100 year flood." And the report entitled Flood Assurance Study, blah, blah, blah. So I would argue that, at least in principle and the language of the ordinance, this isn't necessarily that big of a change. Those restrictions are probably already in place. Um, but this, what this I think really does is it, I guess it takes the more restrictive approach there and it, it does sort of officially and, uh, without any ambiguity, extends those, those regulations in that particular geographic area. Um, but yeah, that's, that's definitely a, something I can see as a concern.
So, so what you just said, this would take precedence over what's in there today? So what you just said, this would take precedence over what's in there today?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that's a lawyer question. Well, that, I mean, right now, the big issue is that there's a conflict. We have the map saying one thing. We have the language of the text saying something else completely different. And so my concern is if, for whatever reason, there's some sort of challenge on some property that's within that floodplain, and I don't know what it'll be. But the city is trying to say that, you know, these standards apply to you. The applicant is saying, no, they don't, because I'm not a zoned floodplain, so I can do this. And the city's saying, well, nah, vice versa, you know. Which one rules today? I don't know.
It's not clear.
It's not clear, and I want it to be clear. I want it to be consistent. I don't want there to be a conflict between what's what. And frankly, just from a sort of common sense perspective, it doesn't make any sense to just sort of haphazardly have some parcel zoned floodplain and some parcels not zoned floodplain when the actual floodplain doesn't follow parcel lines or any sort of man-made geographical boundary really. I mean, there's a few streets and stuff, but generally speaking, the flood zone is where it is. And I always thought it was kind of peculiar on the map, and even on the future land use map, there's just, you know, parcels here and there that are within the future land use's flood zone. And that one's kind of weird. It doesn't really make all the sense, but...
And I'm not, you know, I'm not reasoning a question to give you a sort of a recommendation on a policy issue one way or another, but I think it's something that, you know, whether it exists now or not, you ought to think very carefully through whether or not these are, and especially B1, whether or not that's a type of standard that you want to apply truly and succinctly to apply throughout the 100-year floodplain. And maybe that one needs a little bit more discussion, a little bit more digesting. You may talk with questions, or go and think about this tonight or in the coming weeks.
And the one thing that might be a good idea is, in addition to this, and I can, you know, provide a more comprehensive version of it, but not only, you know, read what I wrote, but also look at the language that's currently in the ordinance. Because there's a lot of stuff that's in there that I didn't include in this amendment because I'm not suggesting that we change it. But, I mean, in the past, you might just think, well, I can worry about that because all these properties are zoned floodplain. Well, now they sort of are. And so now there's a, there's a whole chapter of the ordinance that applies to every parcel downtown. I think every parcel within our mixed-use district, if you just wrote, you know, part of C3. I mean, it's all over the place. And so, you know, really think about if all of those standards make sense for all of those parcels and being aware that those standards apply to a lot more than just those dozen or so parcels that are currently zoned floodplain as they are now or F1.
I'm just wondering if there are ramifications of not applying a tougher standard in some areas, and then someone's property washes away. They say, "Well, you didn't make me comply with rules." Is there anything, I mean, is that something to think about too? I mean, they could say, "Well, I did everything you told me to do. You didn't tell me that it should be a foot above this," because that would have saved it, I'm sure.
Maybe, maybe, yeah. You know, that's partly where you get into differences between a floodway and a floodplain. You know, a property washing away, it is gonna be, I would guess, more likely to wash away on a floodway than a floodplain. On the other hand, you're gonna have, I happen to know of a house from the flood that had some basement floor issues that was under the floodway, but because of the flood, got that heating in the basement floor. Here, we're saying that there shouldn't even, I think we're saying that there shouldn't even be a basement.
Yeah, I think it said that...
It's below the floor, again.
Or it just has to be, it can't be permeable.
Yeah, I mean, there's an out there that says that if there is something that's below the base level, is watertight with walls, substantially impermeable to the passage of water, and with structural components having the capability of resisting hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads and effects of plants. Just your professional engineer architectural certified, these standards are met, and so on and so forth. So there is an out if, you know, for basement or something. And also, even if you're not within the 100-year floodplain, because beyond this, there's also a 500-year floodplain, which extends even farther. There's nothing that prevents anybody from buying flood insurance if they want to. And if you're buying, you know, if you're getting a loan or mortgage for your house, the mortgage company is going to make you do it, or else they're probably not going to even finance it in the first place. And again, if you're, if the lowest habitable floor is not above your floodzone, your flood insurance is gonna be really, really high. So there are some sort of financial reasons that are going to present themselves as well. But somebody, I suppose, could just ignore all of those and do it anyways. And yeah, something catastrophic could happen. I mean, it gets, it gets kind of complicated. I mean, I have had a lot of experience personally with this kind of thing. So I've been through the floodclaiming process. And so I understand it a little bit and how some of that works. But that's limited to, you know, a residential setting. If you're an industrial, you're a commercial, business owner, I don't know if there are differences in how it's, how the insurance works, how the regulations work, and all that. It can be different.
So tonight, are we looking for, to accomplish these next steps, or...
Well, just like with the previous amendment, this is a zoning amendment. So a public hearing and recommendation to council it be recommended eventually. This is a more significant change than the previous one in that, you know, we're not just simply adding a new use and adding some regulations. So, you know, you might want to sort of think about it a bit more. And we can pick this up in January, maybe schedule it here for February. You know, I'll also do some more research and see if there's some ways that maybe we can, you know, make this so it's not too scary for people and that we can make sure, you know, we can make sure that we're protecting the citizens and serving their best interests and things like that.
Okay?
I'm in favor of naming it.
Okay? Discuss it again next month, and you'll come back with additional information.
Is there stuff that... We can get before, I mean, I know you sent us, we get this a week before, as we're trying to learn this. Get it maybe two, three days before. I read it twice. I don't know, when do you meet on this? Is there a workshop or something? Do you have an open forum that I can spend an hour with you while you're doing this so that I can become more educated, I have time? I mean, it's possible. I don't know if it's feasible.
Yeah, we can get together and meet in the morning. I mean, I'm, so in the past, with a lot of the stuff, I'll just come up to see how it would be, whether it's a developer or whoever, go over specific things. And we can certainly set something up between our, the explaining, commission meeting, if there are...
I personally would like to attend it, so Sue's got my email. If you know when that's gonna happen, send it to me. I'll do what I can do.
We might want anything that's typically set up. I did make a note, um, you talked to Andy about pulling together more basic information about flood issues and flood insurance, just sort of, can we get some of that background material to be able to get out to you? But then certainly, if you want, you know, call me and sit down with them on one or, you know, small business, not a quarter on the phone. Yeah, because, you know, whatever you need to get you up to the board where you're ready to make these policy decisions. I'm sure that you get that information and have a discussion.
I think it also makes sense to maybe explore a little bit what other communities with similar water systems do. City Grand Rapids is much bigger, obviously, but has water issues like we do, whereas, you know, other communities just don't have rivers. So, I mean, that could be helpful, I think. Okay? All right? Other new business? We're good? Okay? Staff report? Everything's good? We have the scheduled, the reports on the bag? Okay? Do we get commissioner remarks? Anyone have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Good? Merry Christmas.
Well, yeah, I did want to welcome to the board, it's educational. You'll be learning as you go along, so...
Thank you.
All right, and how do we take that? One second. Okay. All those for yes?
Yes.
Any no's, abstains? That is 801.